Board of Education meeting 1586 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Megan.
Second.
Second by Andrew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And at this time, I would like to invite our Crestwood Elementary students, Max and Ilma, up to the front here to lead us in our pledge this evening. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Kit Norton, Principal of Crestwood Elementary, to present recognitions to our Crestwood family tonight.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is, I'm Mr. Norton, or Kit Norton, I'm Principal at Crestwood. And this is Mrs. Gillian Holmes, our Assistant Principal at Crestwood. And we'd like to call Ilma Dubravich up to come and stand up here with us. Give her a hand, a round of applause. All right, Ilma, so we want to share a few things that your teachers had to say about you because we really think a lot of you in our Crestwood community, and we're so proud of you. So here is some things that your teachers had to say. So where's Mrs. Bridwell? She's here tonight. Here's Mrs. Bridwell. So here's what she said. "The first time I had the pleasure of meeting Ilma's parents, they shared with me the incredible story of her birth and the numerous hurdles she overcame as an infant. Her doctor even remarked that she would forever be a tenacious fighter. What has always struck me about Ilma is her unwavering work ethic and her refusal to give up, no matter what the challenge is. Ilma arrived in St. Louis just last fall. Knowing only a handful of English words, and within a year, she is engaging in fluent conversations with both children and adults. She's one of the most diligent students I have ever had the privilege of knowing. Beyond her remarkable dedication to learning, her sunny disposition, and her ever-present smile are equally inspiring." And from Mr. Fairley, your design lab teacher? "Ilma is always willing to give her best effort on anything that we do and always comes to class with a big contagious smile on her face. She always comes to class prepared and makes class fun for her classmates as well." And then finally, Ms. Cordes, who's here tonight, your teacher, there she is back there. "Ilma is such a joy to have in class. She's a great helper to me and students in the classroom throughout the day. She tries her best on all things and always has a smile on her face. Ilma has strong relationships with all the students in her class and is a friend to all. At recess, she invites others to join on the soccer field and is always ready to give an update on the latest scores. She greets staff and students in the hall throughout the day and is the first to offer a hand to those who need it. Ilma is very bright in math and has been excited to learn multiplication. She comes in every morning and lets me know how many more facts she has left to master. When we're in between read aloud books, she likes to read a story to our class, and they love hearing her read. Ilma is such an amazing person, and I am lucky to have her in my classroom this year." Limburg community, let's give it up for Ilma Dubravich.
So we have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month. And then we have a new T-shirt for you as well, so congratulations. And we're going to do a picture really quick. So we're going to step back this way a little bit. Let's go back here a little bit.
All right, and our next student we'd like to recognize is Max Nguyen. Max, come on up. Max is a second grader at Crestwood, and we have a few things to share that your teacher said about you. So first, from Ms. Bridwell again. She says, "I've never seen Max without a grin on his face. He's one of the happiest students around, and he is a great friend to everyone. What really stands out about Max is his strong work ethic and his amazing geography knowledge. Show him any country's flag, and chances are, Max will know it like the back of his hand. He is an extremely hard worker and is always doing his best in school." Mrs. Pickler, your classroom teacher who's also here, says, "Max truly stands out as a role model for his peers. Whether it's completing assignments, participating actively in class discussions, or helping his classmates, Max consistently goes above and beyond expectations. He has such a positive attitude and is always willing to take on new challenges. Max is not only a diligent student, but also kind and respectful to his classmates, making him a fantastic role model for our Crestwood community." And Mr. Fairley says, "Max is nothing less than a joy to have in class. He is one of those students that you can count on to be listening and paying attention 100% of the time. He helps others with their work and helps me when it is time to clean up, even if he did not make the mess he is cleaning. Max, thanks for being such a positive influence and model of good character and hard work for others."
All right, Max, we have our certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month. And then we also have a new T-shirt for you as well. There you go.
All right, our next person we're going to recognize is our District Support Staff Person of the Year, Mr. Brian Boston. Come on up, Brian. All right, didn't you tell you have a speech tonight? You ready to read it? No. All right. Well, Mr. Brian, as we call him, Mr. Brian is one of our Evening Custodians at Crestwood. He's such an asset to our school. Brian is quick to respond to the needs and resolve problems thoroughly and thoughtfully at our community. He's a self-starter who sees what needs to be done and does it without anyone knowing. He's one of those people that never thinks, "That's not my job." Anytime you ask Brian about something, he doesn't say, "I don't know." Instead, he'll say, "I'm going to find out," and then he resolves your problem for you. Brian's positive attitude and work ethic make Crestwood a better place to be. Brian loves grabbing some chocolate for syrup in the front office, but it never takes away from completing a task, making a staff member laugh, or even helping out a student in need. He takes pride in his work and wants everything to be perfect. I have so much respect for Brian. I've known Brian since I was the PE teacher at Crestwood over 12 years ago, when he was the milk delivery person for our school. Brian always had a smile on his face and was so nice to talk with, even back then. Brian being a part of our team now as our Evening Custodian is just a testament to his character and the deep sense of community that pulled him back to Crestwood full-time. He works hard at his job, but also builds amazing relationships with staff and students. Whenever something is needed in the building, Brian finds a way to make time for it apart from the daily tasks he has to complete. On days that Mrs. Holmes and I stay late, Brian is always willing to help or just stop what he's doing and have a nice conversation. Brian Boston is always positive, easy to get along with, and we enjoy coming to work to see him every day. Limburg community, let's hear it for our District Support Staff Person, Mr. Brian Boston. I'm so glad you said that.
Just close, I was referring to him, and we recognized Brian at All Staff, but I kept saying Bob. And so I go visit Crestwood Elementary, and he's got a name tag on that says Bob. So he's now Bob. So anyway, so Brian, what we have for you is a $30 gift certificate to our online Spiritware store, and then we have a certificate recognizing you as the Staff Person of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm glad Dr. Lake brought up the Bob joke because it was in my notes and I took it away.
And finally, Mrs. Diana Scubic, first grade teacher at Crestwood. Diana's humor, quick wit, and love of her kids is such a strength. She builds strong relationships with students and remains close to them for years after they leave Crestwood. Diana is still connected to students that have graduated and moved on from Limburg and are now community members. There are multiple, multiple stories of her fighting for and advocating for kids who may not have had anyone watching out for them. Diana is skilled and revels in making a positive difference for kids who can be tough. Kids feel seen and special with her. Her passion for teaching is infectious and leaves a mark on the entire school community. What truly sets Diana apart is her unwavering commitment to the growth and well-being of every student under her care. She creates a nurturing, inclusive, and engaging learning environment where students feel empowered and valued. Diana is also a great teammate to her fellow Crestwood staff members. Her teamwork approach has been apparent from the time that she started as a literacy teaching assistant and is especially true now as a classroom teacher. She quickly makes other people feel part of the Crestwood community. She will take any kid from another classroom and give them a pep talk, encouraging and supporting them, but also having high expectations. Her leadership is appreciated. She is also not shy about bringing her opinions to those that need to hear them. Teachers and staff members respect Diana and look to her for guidance and support. Finally, she laughs with her students and fellow colleagues and takes on each day with a smile. We are proud to recognize Diana Scubic as Crestwood's 2023 Teacher of the Year.
But I do have a $30 gift certificate to the online store.
So we're going to take a picture with Adam. Oh, no, sorry, this is Adam.
And at this time, we'll take a few minutes that anyone who came for the recognition portion of the meeting can feel free to go on with your evening before we continue with the business portion of our meeting. We'll move on to 5.0 Consent Resolutions. We have one this evening. American Education Week Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring American Education Week celebrated from November 13th to 17th, 2023, as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Kristi.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 6.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Agenda Items. There are none this evening. 7.0 Communications. We will start with Calendar of Events, Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. If any of you are feeling like I am, it's a very busy time of year with lots of activities, so my list is longer, so hang in there with me. So first, we'll start with Wednesday. Tomorrow, October 18th, the district will observe Unity Day, showing kindness, unity, and inclusion as we stand up for a world against bullying. Also tomorrow, October 18th, is the Strolling Strings Open Rehearsal. So a great opportunity to go see them. Middle school and high school conferences are October 18th through the 19th, so those will continue then. There's no school this Friday, October 20th, as well as Monday, October 23rd. The Teaching and Learning Board Advisory will meet on October 24th. Then October 24th through November 15th, all schools are participating in the Quanis Gently Used Winter Wear Drive. So if you have anything that you can donate, please see your school for specifications. There are middle school and high school orchestra concerts on October 26th. The Limburg Foundation Community Breakfast is coming up the morning of Friday, October 27th. On November 1st, the Strategic Planning Steering Committee will meet. No school on Friday, November 3rd. And then you can support Limburg High School by attending the St. Louis Blues game on Thursday, November 9th. You can check your principal e-notes for the purchasing link. Elementary conferences are November 14th and 16th. And then lastly, we are back here for our regular board meeting on Thursday, November 16th, with our candidate information session immediately following.
Thank you. And 7.02 Report of Meetings. Does anyone have any state, parent group, or other meetings to report?
We do. We have some. I want to start out with the Limburg Holiday House Tour is back on the books. It's December 3rd, and if anybody would like a ticket, you can go to our website. Super excited about that. We have five amazing houses, including the house that used to be the church across from the high school. So I think that's going to be a big draw for us. And all the proceeds go to scholarships for the seniors of the class. We attended a regional meeting for the MSBA, and it was super fun. And if you three want to jump in, and then I'll come back, and I want to talk about a different meeting I attended. So do you have any comments on that? Yeah, on the regional?
No, I was just going to say it was a neat opportunity to get together with some of the other regional board members and chit-chat and get to know some folks and see some faces that I saw in my initial board member training. So reconnect with some people. It was a good time. And I think we got robbed on the trivia personally.
We still had excellent standings for trivia. Yes, they played a trivia game, which was interactive and helped us all kind of network and get to know each other, which was a really great idea. So a lot of breakfast this month, elected officials, clergy, former board members. And I know that not everyone can attend because we have work. Many of the questions were actually, not questions, but excitement about Prop R coming up. And so that was good. They were receiving and interested. And then from former board members, their questions were around assessments. And what about MAP and what about NWEA? So there were some good questions around that. And that's all I have. If anybody has something else.
So I attended quite a few of those, but I also attended Sunday Night Lights, which is always an amazing event if you can go. And I received an email from a patron afterwards talking about how wonderful it is, and they're just so glad that the district does it every year. And then Megan and I attended the SSD Governing Council, but you're our person this year, so I'll let you talk about it.
Thank you. Yes, we did. And it was mostly just kind of, for me, it felt like kind of a kickoff to the beginning of this kind of new cycle. And so we went over the idea of like, what does the Governing Council do? And so myself and Jen, as an alternate, we basically elect the SSD Board members and then approve and monitor the annual budget. And so we meet quarterly to go over all of that. We reviewed SSD CSIP goals, which were student success, coordinating decision-making, and responsive learning environments and systems. So we talked a lot also about just making sure that the relationship between school districts and SSD continues to grow and become stronger and doing what's best for students within the district. Did you have anything else to add?
No, that's great.
And then we also had the homecoming parade put on by the High School Student Council and everybody that contributed to that. It was really neat to see both the community coming out and then all of the students in their different programs participating in that as well. It was really neat. So it was a good time.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to 7.03 Announcements. Ms. Vetter.
So the Board of Education Candidate Information Session and filing dates are coming up. So the Candidate Information Session, we will hold immediately following the regular Board of Education meeting on November 16th, 2023. Interested Limburg residents are encouraged to attend to learn more about becoming a member of the Limburg Schools Board of Education. Then the candidate filing dates. There will be filing for two seats, which are both three-year terms on the Limburg School Board of Education. That opens Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 8:00 a.m. and closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 26th, 2023. Additional filing information will be available soon in the Call Newspaper and on the district website. We want to thank all those who applied to serve as the next student representative. Our selection committee was very impressed with all of the applications received and are so encouraged by the shared interest each of them have in building community, representing all students, and ensuring that voices are heard. So we would like to announce that Limburg High School junior, and please tell me if I say your last name incorrectly. I should have asked beforehand. Laura Pimentel. Thank you. Pimentel was selected to serve as the 2024 Student Representative to the Board of Education. Laura will shadow the current student representative, Adam Spree, throughout the remainder of the 2023 school year and will be sworn in and take her seat at the, not school year, sorry, the year. And will be sworn in and take her seat at the Board Dais in January. So she's scheduled to be here. Would you like to say anything? Yeah, stand up and we'll give you a clap. And that's all, sorry.
Thank you. Well, it's back to you for 7.04 review of upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas.
This one's short, so you won't have to hear me much anymore. So November, we meet again here, November 16th, at 7:00 p.m. for our regular meeting, again with the Candidate Information Session immediately following. The tentative agenda items are our regular business items, PAT Program Evaluation, Policy Readings or Second Readings, the 2024-2025 School Calendar Second Reading. And then Dressel Elementary School is scheduled to be here for recognition. As always, these meetings are open to the public, and patrons are encouraged to attend. Signing off.
Thank you. 7.05 Board of Education Member Appointments. There are none this evening, so we will move to our MSBA Board Report for October.
Welcome to the October edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at filing for the next school board election, which is only a couple months away. There are many things districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Director of Board Development, Katherine Whitaker, says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So candidate filing doesn't open until December. So you have technically two months to let your community know that you do have an opening on the school board potentially. You have time to let them know what it looks like to be a school board member. What does it mean to file? How do you file? And just to give them information about your school district in general. We've created a presentation that superintendents, board presidents can use to inform the community about their school district as a whole and then also about what it means to be a school board member.
Whitaker also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates from filing to election.
So on our website, we have a ton of information, some written by lawyers so that they know how to appropriately file and run a campaign, but some written by us, just again trying to outline what does it look like to be a school board member? What does it feel like to be a school board member? What are your responsibilities? So we've created a module for candidates that school districts can sign up for and then give the login information to those candidates so they can go in and have a better understanding of, now that you're a candidate and you filed, you know, what does it look like to be a school board member? It's interactive, gives a lot of information about the state and what it means to be a school board member.
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. The start of the next legislative session is also just around the corner. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Brandt Shields, says that the upcoming Fall Delegate Assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session.
Coming up later this fall is our Fall Delegate Assembly, held on the Friday of Annual Conference. This is an important opportunity to have your district's voice heard in setting education policy for the state of Missouri. Every member of MSBA is guaranteed at least one delegate in our assembly. Now is a great time to make sure that your delegate's contact information is up to date with MSBA so they receive the latest news and information for the delegate assembly. As we said earlier, legislative session is just around the corner, beginning Wednesday, January 3rd. Make sure you are signed up for MSBA's Legislative Voice Newsletter, published weekly during session, for the latest information and advocacy actions to help you advocate for your students in Jefferson City. As elected officials, your voice is crucial for MSBA to succeed in our legislative goals for the benefit of our students.
And as Brandt said, the Fall Delegate Assembly will be held during the Friday of Annual Conference. If you haven't registered for the conference yet, it's not too late. The 2023 MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, will be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a great lineup of general session speakers. The conference will also feature the Education Expo, the Student Showcase, and much more. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
Thank you. We will move to our special reports from the cabinet, and we'll start with Joelle.
Thank you. Last week, we held our Finance Committee meeting, and we actually had a lot of items to go over. If you look at the consent agenda, we have a lot of annual things to get done, including transportation routes, our new auditorium facility use rates are in there. So we actually had a pretty long meeting this time with a lot of operations approvals. We also had a guest speaker with our energy manager from Navitas, who came and gave a short presentation on that program and its results as we complete our three-year optimization services. services and energy management. So it was a good meeting. Facilities met for the first time this month, and it was a welcome to all the new members. Plus, usually the first meeting, we talk about summer projects, what got completed, because as we know, a lot of our capital improvements from operating funds happen over the summer. This summer, we did do some things, but a lot of our time was spent moving. Our facility guys and our custodial crews spent a lot of time getting the high school ready for the first day in the new completed building, so that was good information. Dr. Lake gave an update on the progress of high school project, when the parking is going to be finished, and the building will be tidied up and all done. And then we also talked a little bit about the items that are going to be presented for the future bond issue in April 2024, and that got some excitement from our Facility Committee members. We have a good representation from a lot of different areas in regard to facilities. It was a good meeting.
Thank you. And Dr. Sparks.
All right. So our Technology Board Advisory spent the last meeting talking about 4th and 5th grade take-home devices. We've had that practice in play for the last couple of years, once we initiated the work from our technology impact study. And we just see some inconsistencies that are happening across the district with how those take-home devices are being used, so we wanted to get some feedback from our Technology Board Advisory so that we could make sure that we are having consistent expectations for our students. One of the things that came out of that was a technology use contract with families, so that is in development now, and I would anticipate that that's going to be part of our work coming out and communicating with families in the next couple of months. In terms of teaching and learning, we have not met since our last board meeting. We meet again in next week. I had to figure out what week I was on. Next week, and we're going to get some input on developing our dashboard for the Success Ready Students Network. So as we talked about tonight in the workshop, we're really in the throes of developing that, so I think getting some input from our Board Advisory on what they would like to see on that will be really helpful. And then finally, student life. We really just had a continuance of our meeting from September. We had such great conversations about supporting the transition of students from early childhood to kindergarten, 5th to 6th, 8th to 9th, and then of course, from high school into post-secondary. So we found that we needed more time to delve in and gather the input that everyone had, and so we spent the time doing that, and then we'll use that information to guide the development of the remainder of our meetings.
Thank you. And I will comment on the HR Committee. We did meet this past week, and we went over the enrollment numbers, the HR report, and then the changes to the benefit and healthcare package, which we're voting on later this evening. Right, we will move on to Student Report. Adam.
All right. So as Ms. Vetter stated, it's gone pretty busy around the district, so just some general LHS recognitions. We recently had our fall play, it was the Brothers Grimm Spectaculathon. I had the pleasure of attending, and despite it being the first year on the auditorium, first year with a new drama director, it was amazing. It was a great laugh, it was a great time, and I think everyone really enjoyed it. Our girls tennis and girls golf team both qualified for state this year. I know the girls tennis team, they made it, I think, 7th in girls doubles, and then girls golf is currently ongoing, as we can tell by Dr. McKenney's absence. Additionally, we had an LHS student who qualified for the Fred Sae Leadership Academy, so he's currently participating in that. It's really only 15 students from across the St. Louis area, so it's a really good opportunity for fostering leadership and also addressing some of the most important issues in our local Lindbergh community. Some upcoming events, obviously Unity Week, as we can tell with the orange up here. So we have some fun events at the high school. I believe we have like kindness notes, there's going to be like a dance party, I'm pretty sure. So just some fun stuff like that, and some various anti-bullying programming throughout the week. And then we also have parent-teacher conferences coming up, so always a good thing. We had our pink-out football game this past weekend, and even though it was rained out at the beginning, it was a really good time, and they raised some great funds for breast cancer research. Same thing with our Sunday Night Lights event this past Sunday. They also did some great fundraising there and gave students who would normally not have the opportunity an opportunity to do some games and different community activities. An update on my student representative board advisories, we went to Crestwood this month. It was definitely a different dynamic than the middle school one. I'd say with middle school is much more in-depth, much more kind of loose, but this, I thought was more structured. But it was really effective. I think we learned some great things, and as some of our previous speakers say during the workshops, I think that extracurriculars are definitely something we should be pushing in our elementary schools, as they seem to really build a community. And then I want to just congratulate Laura as well. I know there are some, it's definitely a big role to step into, and although I will be sad to go come December, I'm really excited to see what she makes of the position, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to 9.0 action items by consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.12, this evening. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.12?
So moved.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Megan. Anyone have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have one individual action item this evening, 10.01, the 2024 Medical Dental Vision and Life Coverage Costs. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024 Medical Dental Vision and Life Coverage Costs as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Kristi.
Second.
Second by Andrew. And Joelle, I think you are speaking for Dr. McKenney.
Yes. This is an annual process we bring every year, and every year we hope to bring our data with limited changes, and we've been successful with that for many years. But this year, we have made some recommendations or changes in the plan. I will say, and I want to recognize Anne Werthen, our benefits director, and then Chris from Brown and Brown is our benefits broker. They've been working on this presentation and this plan since, I know May of last year is when we first met with our insurance committee. We have a representation of all of our employees, classifications, that need to go over insurance and talk about insurance and talk about claims and things that are happening in our plan. A lot of data, a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of numbers, and we gathered that group in May last year as we started seeing the numbers and how they were kind of falling out and claims were up. So in your packet, there's a lot of information about our loss ratio, which a loss ratio means claims over premiums, and in our past five years, that number has been rising. So we do have some recommended changes with this process, but I feel very proud as a member of the committee and working with this team that we came together and everyone is taking a part in the change. So there'll be some deductible changes, there's some out-of-pocket changes, the district is adding more to its contribution, so it's like everybody has skin in the game, and everybody really had advance notice and saw the numbers and saw that claims is what's generating these changes. And claims are up. We also know from Chris that nationwide, claims are up. It's more about post-COVID. You know, I guess the post-COVID happening, that claims are up across the nation. I'd like to say is, we're very good with our wellness program too, so hopefully people are accessing and getting their need, you know, their medical needs or just even preventive care done. I think COVID might have taught us all a little bit about that too, that getting to your doctor is important, so there's a positive with claims up as well because people are taking care of themselves. So this recommendation in here, like I said, is a detail on different pieces of the plan that are changing. Our group met, the insurance committee group met, again, was that a month ago? And really, they were prepared for it. Had good questions, but really consensus that these changes needed to be made. We are eliminating one plan and streamlining it down to two plans. That information was based on how people are using their plan. So what came out of the meeting, I guess, is more time in buildings so people can understand how these plans work during open enrollment. We now have an HSA plan as a standard, and then a base medical plan. There used to be a buy-up plan, but there'll just be those two right now. And again, I think it was a great, great process. There was no surprises. Everybody was on board, never we had skin in the game, and hopefully, our wellness program will help us reduce some of these claims, and we can start getting back to that five-year cycle where we see less. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Are there any predictions, just in the industry, of whether the claims are going to ever level out, or is this just going to keep going?
Chris, I'm going to let you talk, the expert there, about what you're seeing. Yep, come on, Chris. Maybe we can come up here.
What we've seen is, post-COVID, during 2020, doctors' offices were closed. Hospital elective surgeries, hip replacements, knee replacements, got delayed. In 2021 and 2022, that utilization started spiking back up, getting to a more realistic level. Because of doctors' offices being closed during COVID, people didn't get their regular wellness exams like they would do on an annual basis. So cancer claims became the number-one stop-loss reimbursement claim in 2022, first year that's ever happened. So things are getting caught later and in the later stage. We think they are going to curve back out and become more realistic, but it is the post-COVID. We thought, our actuaries thought, two to three years before everything got back to a post-COVID regular norm. So we're hoping those trends come back down. Again, as Joelle and Anne and I worked on this program to look at the changes, one of the biggest changes we thought we would do is, when everyone looks at a medical plan, they look at their total out-of-pocket costs. Well, there's a $4,500 out-of-pocket cost on one PPO and a $5,000 on another, and then there was the $3,000 on the HSA plan. Last year in 2022, 82.5% of the people never hit $1,000 total out-of-pocket. So these plan changes we are going to make are going to affect a very few membership individuals in the plan. 4% of the membership accounted for about 80% of the total claims, and their average claims averaged about $72,000 last year. So they're blowing through the out-of-pocket no matter what. You're not going to change an individual that's sick like that. They're going to hit their out-of-pocket maximum, but these changes we're making are going to affect very little people, but be significant in planned savings over the next year or two.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So we have our motion by Kristi and a second by Andrew, and we'll move to our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have two for the record items this evening, the 2025 to 20, I'm sorry, 2024 to 2025 School Calendar First Reading and the official enrollment for first semester count day of the 2023-2024 school year. After reviewing, you can contact Dr. Sparks regarding the calendar, and enrollment questions can be directed to Dr. McKenney, and the calendar will be brought back for approval next month. We have no other reports this evening. We will move to 11.03, Review of Board Policy, JHDE Behavioral Risk Assessment First Reading. Upon review of this policy, questions should be directed to Dr. Sparks, and the policy will be brought back next month for approval. We have no resident-initiated agenda items this evening, and as we already conducted our executive session, there is no need, so we will move to 14.0 Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1586?
So moved.
Is that Megan? Okay. Motion by Megan, second by Andrew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Board Meeting 1586 is adjourned.